Good evening and welcome to our December 9th Town Council meeting.
Um, Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. I would like to start with just a moment of silence. As we speak right now, there is a wake for John Benevento right now. And this week, we did have a police officer, Officer Burgary, and also the former Assistant Director at our Recreation Department's father-in-law, Jim Cunningham's father-in-law passed away. So just keep their families in their prayer. It's always difficult grieving, particularly right before the holidays, makes it a little more difficult. Thank you. So first thing on our agenda this evening is the nominations for the following year. Little housekeeping, we have canceled the December 29th meeting. Most of everything is on this agenda. There wasn't, didn't seem to be anything pertinent or time-sensitive, so we canceled that meeting for the holidays, pretty much. And our next meeting will be January 6th.
Okay. We have nomination of Council President?
Have a nomination of Council President. I think...
If I could, just very briefly. Speaking of housekeeping, I just wanted to nominate myself and just make a brief comment, just very briefly, because I haven't had a chance to talk to all my colleagues. And I just wanted to say, I wanted to nominate myself for Council President, and I think, like all my colleagues, I think we are all, I'm confident that we could all handle this position. I happen to be the longest-serving councilperson not to be a council president, and as I'm sure everybody's aware, I've let people know that I was interested in running, and we've got quite a few emails, all of us, to the council about this. So I just wanted to just make a formal motion to nominate myself.
Okay. And I do appreciate that. There were just two things, though, and from the series of emails that we did receive predominantly today. Many residents are supporting Joe. I applaud the chorus of support. But two things, it's not about the longest-serving person on the council, and it is also, there is no provision for a rotation. So it's not a matter of taking turns, it's a matter of being nominated by your peers and your colleagues. Councilwoman Spango said that articulately at our last meeting. So I just want everyone to understand that that's not the process as we move forward.
Okay. Is there a second?
Thank you, Council President.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Jerry Guarino.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kokoviac?
I'm going to abstain, but it's no reflection of my confidence that Councilman Guarino will do an excellent job.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
That was very difficult, and it was very awkward, and I feel like I really do want to justify my vote. I, and Joe's right, we probably are, we are all competent enough to serve in the position, but when you're elected or appointed by your colleagues, I guess as an educator, why I feel so uncomfortable right now? Because we do teach fairness and equity, and it seems like taking turns is the fair thing to do. But I think that works in a classroom, I think it works in a team, and I think it works when you're all of like mind. And we have not agreed on many things in the past four years. I feel like I've worked so hard to make partnerships and try to strengthen and unify the community, and I'm just, I'm not comfortable, really, in the directions that we operate and the direction that we govern. So I just, I felt like I wanted to justify my vote, just to explain to the public. I'm voting for, that I would appoint Jerry Guarino. He has already spearheaded things, initiated ordinances, and I want to move in that direction. Spearheaded things like the Pleasant Valley Civic Association most recently.
I, Council President, I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Kokoviac for his kind words and his show of support. I appreciate that sincerely.
Moving on to council liaisons for the 2014-2015 term.
I guess everyone wants to?
I'd like to nominate Council President Susan McCartney to remain on the planning board. She's done an excellent job and has a great experience in the planning and development of the township.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Local assistance? I don't know who currently serves on that.
I have the initials of everyone at the end there, just so you see. Patty Spango?
Oh, that's not on my copy.
It's in the...
Yeah, if anyone, okay.
Do we have a, I would nominate Patty if you want to stay on, if anyone else wants to try that on?
I second Councilwoman Spango's appointment.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Our next one is the Degnan House. Victor Cirillo is currently serving as the liaison to the Degnan House.
I nominate Councilman Cirillo for the Degnan House.
Second, if you want to stay, Victor?
Yes. Sorry, I was only saying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I miss being on the Rena House. I know Patty Spango is serving right now, and I know that you want to stay, and you're in the midst of things, so I think it would be important for that continuity. I would nominate Patty to stay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Downtown West Orange Alliance?
Sure, the same thing. I would nominate Jerry Guarino to continue to stay. I see a lot of work, a beautiful, though rainy weekend, just this weekend with the holiday tours and the craft fair, and I would nominate Jerry for this.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. West Orange Municipal Alliance Committee, Patty Spango's currently serving.
Patty, if you'd like to stay, or if anyone else would want to try the municipal alliance. Joe, Victor, Jerry?
Okay, is there a motion?
I made a motion to nominate Patty.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. West Orange Arts Council, Susan McCartney.
I nominate Council President Susan McCartney to continue if she wants.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Open Space and Recreation Committee, Joe Kokoviac?
Councilman Kokoviac's on open space. Joe, if you want to stay, or if anyone else wants to turn?
I'm happy to say if somebody wants to.
Yes.
I second.
Okay, nominate Joe.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Joint Meeting Commission, it's a two-year term, currently Councilwoman Spango is serving.
So 2015 would be the second year of this two-year term?
No, it's...
It's over?
It expires in December, because it was, you know, because of the municipal election being changed, everything was carried through December 31st of this year. So this is for 2000, going forward, to 15, 16.
Does Patty have, no, the question was, does Patty have one more year to serve, to finish out this term? This is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're voting for a new two-year term?
Correct.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Patty Spango as a joint meeting commission.
Is there a second?
Patty, that's if you want to stay. No one else is, any other nominees?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Insurance Fund Commission, two representatives for a two-year term, currently Councilman Cirillo and Councilman Guarino.
And again, the term is up, and we are nominating two more people.
Correct.
I nominate Councilman Guarino and Councilman Cirillo.
Joe, are you, any nomination, anything?
If they want to do it, I'm happy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Is there anything that we missed?
That takes care of all of our council liaison appointments.
Okay. Matt, help us out.
What's going on over there, Mr. Sayers?
I got a lot of jobs here, Christian isn't one of them, I tell you. I think that the thing is broke, so we're gonna have to operate without that mic.
It sounded very loud and clear a few seconds ago.
Yeah, but I can't plug it in, because it's, if I'm getting on the bottom, it's not for some reason, so.
Madam Clerk, one of the other commissions I would like to add on here, though I did just reinstate the Environmental Commission, and am happy to serve as the Standby Jersey Coordinator to that Environmental Commission, but I think that should be, as we move forward, added to our list of commissions for liaison. And if anyone would like to join the Environmental Commission, we meet the fourth Thursday of every month, not this month, but in January, we will start a new year, and we are going to tackle the Passaic Valley Sewer Report and the Rutgers Study that came out looking for stormwater management sites. We have 21 sites on the report that Rutgers gave us. We have a two-year commitment, agreement to complete the stormwater, the rain gardens at different sites, and that will be the project that we tackle starting January, to prioritize that list. Any other? Next on our agenda is our Public Information Officer.
I have a few announcements for the, this week. The West Orange Police Department Community Service Unit has kicked off its annual Holiday Food Drive. It's going on now through Christmas, so you have a couple more days to get involved. They are collecting non-perishable food items. The collection points are Llewellyn Edison Savings Bank at 474 Prospect Avenue, and 83 Northfield Avenue, and also the Shoprite at Essex Green Plaza. Okay. We can, we've now implemented a procedure where you can receive email reminders from the tax collector's office. You can sign up to receive calendar alerts from the tax collector prior to your payment being due. It's going to come to you approximately 14 days beforehand, and you can sign up at westorange.org, www.westorange.org.
Jess, is that something, when you're doing in and around town, is that something that can go out as a blast, to let people know, like an informational?
Yes, I have been doing that, yes, absolutely, and it's been on our Facebook page as well. On Thursday, December 18th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m., the West Orange African Heritage Organization is hosting its annual Kwanzaa celebration. It's going to be at Element, Washington Elementary School at 289 Main Street. This is a free event, and everyone's invited to attend. Thursday, December 18th, from 6:30 to 9:00. And on Monday, December 22nd, at 3:45 p.m., we will light the menorah at Town Hall, right on the front lawn. This is an annual celebration. And finally, the public is invited to have Coffee with the Cop. This program is going on all over New Jersey, and we are having that, we're starting a four series, we're starting off with first of four in our series. It's gonna be December 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Panera Bread in Essex Green Plaza. So neighbors and residents are invited to come and talk to the police, they can give ideas, they can give suggestions, they can just chat with a police officer. It's a great way to show your community spirit and learn a little bit more about what our police department does, day in and day out for this town. And that's it for this evening.
So the Coffee with the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Megan, are you doing the tree lighting?
Well, the rescheduling.
Yeah, actually, Megan Brille is gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Council President, may I make the comment?
I just wanted to say something about the Coffee with the Cop program, because Lieutenant Marilla came to the chamber meeting, 7:30 this morning. And this is a nationwide program, and this is going to be run by four officers that are in the Community Service Unit. So they're already, you know, really familiar with the community, they welcome any comments, recommendations, and suggestions. So it's more like a roundtable discussion, it's not, you know, private little discussions, it's a, it sounds like a...
Right, it's not one-on-one, it's just people getting together and talking.
Mm-hmm, and just being more, better informed.
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you very much. Oh, do you have a question?
Yes, I did.
Great.
Jessica, this is your last meeting with us.
It is, indeed.
And I'm sorry to bring up such a terrible thing, but I just want to thank you for one, for all the help and direction and guidance you gave me, and education on being a councilperson in the Township of West Orange. I also want to thank you, on behalf of the township, for the great service you did for us, and the things that you created, you're working with the Downtown Alliance and all the others. You really were a great partner, we're gonna miss you, but remember, you always have a home in West Orange.
That's right, I do, thank you.
And I'll see you again, and I'll see you at Thanksgiving, right?
Yes, you will. Thank you so much, I really do appreciate those words of kindness.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thanks, Jess. We have an open, oh, let me, we just have a couple of council liaison announcements also, that the Pleasant Valley Civic Association is having an open house on Sunday, December 14th. This is at 446 Pleasant Valley Way, next to the Dunkin' Donuts, Burger King, on Pleasant Valley Way, you're cordially invited. This will be from 12 to 4:00. It says, "You're cordially invited to attend, stop in and see old acquaintance, stay and make new friends, bring a dish, dessert, or just yourself." There will be kosher and vegan, vegan food tables, short meeting to update on the progress, and at 1:30, a magic show for kids at 2:00 p.m. Everyone's invited. On that same, frequently, we, you hear us talk about the Badlani Foundation, I'm still in awe of the Badlani Foundation, and this is a global event. This started out with Sangita and Sunil lighting candles on their front lawn, and this is called the Compassionate Friends Supporting Family After a Child Has Died, and they were lighting candles in a small service on their front lawn. A few years ago, we asked if we can use the Field House, the Degnan Field House, Toby Cat Center, and now what we do is memorialize, have a memorial service. On the same thing, this will be on Sunday, December 14th, starts at 6:30, and what we do, we do light candles for the families that attend, and we float them on the Vincent Pond. So it's a very touching, I, I'm lost for words, I'm sorry. "We gather together to honor our children who are gone too soon and provide comfort and hope to the bereaving family and parents. It's a memory table where you can place photos and mementos of your children, grandchildren, and siblings. Welcome to bring family and friends, there will be a time for sharing, encouraged to share baked goods with those that attend. Tea, coffee, and hot chocolate will be provided." It's an open invitation. Thank you. Okay. Any other council liaison? Okay, she has all of yours.
I'll try to leave something for you, Jerry. Actually, it was Councilman Cirillo who came Saturday in the pouring rain to our open house, which was downtown, in front of the Community House and at Lord's, and all around downtown, and he said, "You know, how did you get so many people to know about it?" And really, it was all of the departments within, you know, my reach, working together to pull it all off, between Jessica and Perry with the, you know, online, with, you know, online support. When you talk about having to get, you know, a flyer out to 5,000 families in town, there's no real cheap way to do that. We were really able to do that with our Facebook posts. In the beginning of the summer, I, we had 202 likes on our Facebook page, and I told the board that I wanted to really, you know, pursue that, and I think, on my own, you know, sharing each other's posts, we got it up to about 400. So by August, we had like 400. From August until now, we have like over 1,200 likes on our Facebook page, which I heard is more than Mayor Parisi's Facebook page. But I think that what, what's important about that is really that we were able to pull off an event in the rain with, you know, with a lot of people working together. I want to thank, I don't think Sharie is here, she is, come on up here, girl. Yes, Sharie is, I met Sharie over the farmer's market, and she is a resident of West Orange, specifically downtown, and she ran the bazaar on Saturday. So I wanted everyone to introduce her, she's my new best friend.
It must have been a successful event, because she's here and she's smiling.
You know, we, we just hit it off, we connected over the farmer's market, stay, stay over here. We connected over the farmer's market, you know, that is one of the things that when you're spending all day Friday in the Quigley Lot, you really need support and help, and a lot of people definitely rose to the occasion and helped us out. But Sharie saw something, you know, different, the management of that, the pumpkin painting event and the trick-or-treating event would not have been as successful without her. And then I had said last year that we really need to have a bazaar at the open house for something for people to do while they're waiting for the trolley, and Sharie volunteered, and I really had very little to do with it, which is really great on our part, because we're only gonna be as successful if it's just me and John and a few of us. If we can open up our organization and really pull in lots of different parts of town, that's the game changer. And that's truly what I saw on Saturday, and I can't thank you enough, and we're gonna continue to do great things downtown. The other piece that was really important to this was the Santa's Breakfast at Our Lady of Lord's Church. The Lord's used to do the breakfast when they had a school, then they moved the school up to St. Joe's, and then they did a breakfast, but then they got rid of the school, and that was a really great event for so many members of our community, and we have a fabulous Santa, so I didn't want to let that go. So I ran into Greg Boyle at the Veterans Day Ceremony, and I asked Greg if his church, Unconditional Love Christian Fellowship, would take over the breakfast for us, and they did. So that's like a whole new, I, you know, I did a little bit of work on the breakfast, but that was really them. And so, you know, every year, if we can add a piece and build it and make it better, make it bigger and better, that's definitely our goal. I think that I, I also want to thank Paul Sito, he gave us a community house, and it was high maintenance for us, two days in a row. But with that partnership, we've used Paul on a couple of, you know, we've used the community house on a couple of occasions, and it's a very successful partnership. That is a place that, you know, more people need to understand and go to, at 242 Main Street, and the new gym will be opening within this year, so there's a whole lot of stuff that we'll be able to do as a community together, and I'm, you know, really looking forward to that. This Friday night, because last Friday night, the tree lighting got canceled, so the mayor's old-fashioned tree lighting and Santa will be here beginning at 4:30 on front lawn, weather permitting, and you'll hear all about it if it ends up getting canceled. But that's Santa, Santa's workshop, you know, petting zoo, whole, whole big thing. So don't miss that. And then the last announcement that I have is our strategic planning meeting, which is Thursday night, beginning at 5:30. I need to know if you're coming, if you haven't already told me, so I appreciate you letting me know. By the time this airs, the meeting will be over. But it's definitely the first step in, in really looking at Main Street and looking at downtown, and really creating the Main Street that we all want, and what our town needs. So we're excited about that, and I think that that's it.
Meg, anything about the trolley tours? Because each trolley tour was packed, which was wonderful, and just the setup, Sharie really, for the craft fair, a lot of homemade items, it was really, really a nice event, and some of the vendors came from Bloomingdale and, you know, far out there.
You know, two years ago, we had 100 people on the trolley ride. Last year, we had about 300 people, and that made me nervous, because you only have, you know, a short window of time. And the trolley that we get from the county, which was, you know, wonderful, the driver was great, and it's a trolley. Doesn't fit a lot of people, so I was nervous about that, which is why we asked to have reservations, because I wanted to accommodate the folks that really wanted to be there. And we were able to do that, and John actually was the monitor of the, getting everybody in and off the trolley, but I...
But it worked out so well, because the tents were there, and as they came off of the trolley, you can go right into the craft fair and stay out of the rain, even though the tents were there, that was a good idea.
Right, right.
Worked out very nicely. So you did an outstanding job.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we weren't able to do a lot of things, like we wanted to decorate outside, we wanted to have some vendors and stuff outside of the community house, which we couldn't do because of the weather, and we also had characters that were gonna be along the route. When we talk about the blacksmith that was downtown and the hill climb, and I was worried about costumes in the rain, I didn't want to ruin all the costumes. So we pulled it in the 11th hour, and the gentleman from On Q in Montclair didn't charge me, which was like a $500 expense, that, you're wearing that dress, I'm gonna put you in that dress, by the pay for it, you're gonna wear it. So, you know, it truly was everybody working together to pull off very great, you know, another, I think it was our 10th annual holiday open house.
Council, Councilman?
Megan, thank you. It was a great event, even in the rain, even in the rain. Sharie, thank you. Welcome, welcome to the group and everything else, and we look forward to many great things coming from you and your partnership with us, and the, it was great. I mean, inside with Paul, you were able to walk around, you could keep, keep warm, but it was a lot of, I bought a bunch of things too for Christmas gifts, so the bazaar was fantastic, and thank you, and welcome to the group.
Great. Thank you. I have one more, save the date. This is for the West Orange Chamber of Commerce. The Annual Breakfast, which is a platform for the mayor to present the state of the town address, is on Wednesday, February 4th, at 7:30. Though the manor over many years has been very accommodating for us, we have outgrown that space, so we are moving the mayor's, the Chamber Breakfast to the Wilshire Grand on Wednesday, February 4th, and it's at 7:30 a.m. Please save the date. You can go to westorange, which is spelled out, westorangechamber.com for more information. Any other announcements? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First on our agenda is public comment. If anyone has a comment, please come up to the lectern, name and address. For the record. Welcome.
Hi, Marielle Clemmison, for Cherrywood Circle in West Orange. Tonight, I'm representing a Rock Spring neighborhood watch group, which has about 325 adult residents living in the area, bounded by Walker Road, Rock Spring Golf Course, and South Mountain Reservation. At the request of our residents, the mayor is holding a meeting on Wednesday, December 17th, at Town Hall at 6:30 p.m., together with Police Chief Abbott and Assistant Prosecuting Attorney for Essex County, Ralph Ammarada. The topic concerns public safety policy issues in the aftermath of the tragic murder of Brendan Tevlin on June 25th, 2014. Certain neighbors in St. Cloud, Gregory, the Valley, and elsewhere have requested to be included in this meeting. Just want to point out, based on our discussions and discovery, that the police were able to identify the murderer as early as July 1st. This is after the murder was June 25th. But the public really didn't hear anything about this until after he was caught, which was July 18th. So those of us in Rock Spring, unfortunately, close to where this happened, we requested this meeting because we want to understand what the current policies are behind notifying the public, and whether these public policies should be updated to reflect better public participation and notice. And it is our hope that we can realize better communications after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Can I say it?
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFenzenzo. First of all, I want to thank West Orange and the West Orange Fire Department. When we opened up the Holiday Lights Spectacular the day after Thanksgiving, the fire department generously brought Santa Claus in to the delight of a group of about 100 kids who had assembled, 100 kids and families who had assembled before the gates opened up. So I want to thank you for that. And also, just to remind you, Holiday Lights continues until January 4th. It's closed during the week, this week, but reopens December 12th, and it's open every day, except for December 24th and 25th, from 5 to 9. Free admission, but we do ask if you do visit, if you bring non-perishable food items, winter coats, and unwrapped toys for the less fortunate. And like I said, that goes until January 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Anthony?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Paglisi, when will the new field at Walker Road at Turtleback Rock be open?
I can check on that. I know that they, we had it closed for the grass to knit, but it should be ready for the spring, but I can get you a definite answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? I'm sorry.
Susan Luntrick, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. Based on the recent discussions here regarding feral cats, it is clear that West Orange residents are no different from residents of communities everywhere in their love of animals, their compassion toward hungry strays, and their desire to do what is best for animals, as evidenced by strong support of TNR. In light of this love for animals, I invite the community and the council to a discussion of the book For Love of Animals: Christian Ethics Consistent Action. This book was written by Dr. Charles Camozzi, a tenured professor of Christian ethics at Fordham University and a West Orange resident. This discussion will be hosted by the Christian Book Club at Our Lady of Lord's Church in collaboration with the parish's social concerns ministry, and all are welcome to attend. The book is part of the collection of the West Orange Public Library, and it's also available on amazon.com as a hard copy or an electronic copy. The book discussion will take place at Our Lady of Lord's Church downstairs on Tuesday, January 27th, at 7:00 p.m. We want to give people as much notice as possible so they can have an opportunity to read the book in case they want to participate. As I stated previously, all are welcome, and the issue is relevant to our community. On another note, I know that Council President McCartney, you explained your reasons for your thinking on the discussion of the selection of Council President. But in June of 2013, at the last meeting at which the president was selected, it was clearly stated that the selection is based on whether or not a person has held the office, coupled with seniority. And that statement was made. The quote is, says, "Everyone does get a term." So there's a disconnect between what was discussed then and what was discussed this evening. So if what was stated at that June meeting was not true, then the question is, why was it stated to be true? Since all of the council members represent all of us, every citizen, it would seem reasonable for us to expect an equitable sharing of tasks on the part of the council. Also, we don't expect this body to agree on everything. There should be room for disagreement in other perspectives. That's the way it is in the community, so we expect that on the council, too. And the last issue is, I just have a question about the sound system. I know that there was a lot of money spent on improvements here, and we really appreciate all those. But I've been at meetings, I guess one of the zoning board meetings, we were actually, the public was scolded, because we were complaining that we could not hear what was being discussed. And the zoning board told us, you have to talk to the council about that. They're the only ones that can fix the problem. So I'm just curious as to when or if that issue is going to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you repeat your last name? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of our meeting. Just want to make sure. I'm sorry. Comments? Marielle, thank you for the update. That has been a few months now in the making. I'm glad that a date has been set. I see the list of people that will attend, the officials that will attend. It's a good assortment, because the West Orange Police Department worked very closely with the Essex County Prosecutor's Office, so it was a good assembly there. So we look forward to attending. And Susan, thank you for your comments and the follow-up on the feral cats. I thought you were going to ask what our status was with that. I have been asking the Health Department about that. They are still gathering information from other municipalities to see what is the best practice. And so it's not, it is something that is a work in progress, and I know that the Health Department, Health Director is still personally looking at the issue. And thank you for the information on the, on the book discussion. And John, maybe you can give us an update on the sound system, because that was brought up before.
Actually, we're down to two vendors that we're dealing with, and look forward to selecting one over the next week or so, and hopefully by the beginning of the year or shortly thereafter, we'll have some improvement, if not all.
Thank you. And the comments about the Council President, I don't know where that, I don't know who said that. I think it was probably just at the time, and it seemed, like I said before, that it seems like the fair, and I use the same word, the fair and equitable thing to do. But there are reasons behind the nomination. It's not a provision on rotation. There is not a provision on rotation. It's not that kind of a process. I think it's all about how you govern, and it's all about how you operate. And as I said before, like-minded and moving in the same direction. And yes, we can all agree and to disagree, but I would still like to be moving in the same direction. Any other comments?
Review the agenda. Consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting minutes of November 25th, 2014.
Consent?
Reported township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence from Mayor Parisi, appointing Municipal Court Judge Margaret Padavano as Chief Judge effective January 1st, 2015, and ending with Robert Parisi's term as mayor.
Consent?
Consent, sorry.
Correspondence from Mayor Parisi for advice and consent of the Township Council for the appointment of Dennis O. Dowd Esquire as Municipal Court Judge for a three-year term effective January 1st, 2015, and continuing through December 31st, 2017.
Consent.
Consent.
The mayor, excuse me, one minute. The mayor is on his way, and I know that Mr. Dowd and Bryn Wynnell are both here as related to this. Dennis, I know you have experience about the conference agenda and how long these things take, so I appreciate that. That's right. Thanks to John Gross, our CFO slash interior designer. So we'll wait till the mayor too, and then you can introduce. Thank you.
Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent?
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I have a question on Resolution A.
Are you pulling it? Or just a question?
Yes. I'll pull it. I really do appreciate the resolution from the planning, offering the American Planning Association, offering that, the grant, or this application for the planning process. But can you tell me what that acronym is? C-T-T-E-C. I don't know what that stands for, and I don't see it in any of the documents.
Which resolution?
C-T-T-E-C. This is for Resolution B.
That is a, and I don't remember the exact- meaning of the acronym, but it is a grant that we get from University of Rhode Island. So, it's for the active shooter drill.
For the planning?
I'm sorry?
The planning process? This was for the planning process?
That's for the, for the planning for the active shooter drill. Are we talking about two different ones?
I was talking about B. I was talking about B, the resolution, revenue, and appropriation. The planning, yeah, the planning, right. I just didn't know what that acronym was.
It doesn't state it anywhere.
It doesn't state it anywhere. I didn't know if we knew. Regardless, it's good for, regardless, we'll figure it out. Okay, I think we're going to pull resol, should we pull resolutions G for the municipal court? Or not necessarily pull it? Okay. Continue, I just have another question on Resolution L. This is a resolution adopting the drug and alcohol policy for safety-sensitive employees in transit and transportation. I wanted to know the genesis of that, and it seems to me that it really is just a housekeeping, something with the new health insurance.
We already have a policy, but the policy that we have in effect doesn't hit all the bases in terms of the federal requirements.
Okay.
So we've worked with New Jersey Transit on this. They actually provided us with a draft, actually the policy that we've looked over and, I guess, amended it to meet our specific needs. And it will now, we will now be in full compliance with federal law, as well as state law, which we were before, and county to the extent it exists.
So this is really just being carved out to?
It's not carved out. It's an upgrade. It's an upgrade of our current policy. And again, just to meet, to meet the federal requirements, we know when you get into busing, there's different requirements for actually providing the jitney, as well as the, most of our CDL drivers. You know, the federal regulations are, quite frankly, more strict, and this makes us in compliance with federal regulations as well. But you're right, it is basically housekeeping.
You're right. Okay. This, just a comment on Resolution O. This is about a quitclaim deed on Tompkins Street, and this was for a veteran that lived there. And I just want to, again, condolences to the family. This is a fellow I have never met in all of the years that I have served on the council, and he often sent me emails, just about statistics and census and just different kinds of information. And I was surprised to hear about this. So just, again, condolences to the Barrett family. Colleagues, any other resolutions being pulled?
Just a few questions.
Yes?
21614?
21614, Community Development- Yes, I'm sorry, missed that.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's the same question, Council President. You may have the-
I do not have the document. Okay. No, I don't have the document.
Oh, the doc, it's on the back. Double side.
It's a document to follow, and I never saw the document.
It's in your folders.
In the new one?
In your folders.
Okay. And Bethany was not on it?
Yeah, it's not on the priority list, and I don't know if it happened, if it was removed purposely, left out. I know it was in the-
As far as I know, there was no application submitted. And there was no application submitted as of the date we submitted this list. As a matter of fact, I want, we would like to make an amendment to this list. Not that it's really going to matter much, but we wanted to move the West Orange Community House to the number one spot, and the reconstruction to the number two spot.
I second that.
Just so you know, West Orange Community House is revitalizing a building on Main Street, which is going to be used for a lot of different types of recreational programs, not just for our regular residents, but also for needy families that frequent the community house. So we feel that we're going to prioritize our CBD G block grant money for that purpose.
It's the historic building next door?
Correct.
Yeah, it was part of the tour. That was an old theater, one of the first two original theaters in West Orange. So I'm glad that, you know, that the community house has acquired that property.
May I add a comment about that? The thing about what's being, Mr. Sito, who's doing a tremendous job at Community House, that facility, which was the old Majestic Theater and the Admiral Benbow Inn, we're not really sure, but Community House bought it, they got it to building, they structured, they improved the foundations. It's going to be a new gym, available to the community, with eight basketball setups, offices, and bathrooms, and locker areas. But it's going to be a tremendous facility, and it will be available to the community. It's not just for Community House. So I just want to say, it's going to be, you should get a chance. If you go to Community House, if you ever go down there and see Mr. Sito, he'll gladly, believe me, he'll gladly take you on a tour. So I just want to say, it's a great thing. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of history there. A lot of history. It goes back to 1911, when it was first donated to the town. And for, I don't know if members of the public know where the Community House is, it's across the street from CVS on Main Street, by the, by the old, it used to be called the West Orange Diner, it's the Americana Diner now. And it's just, there's a lot of history on Main Street. There's a lot of history. So hopefully next year, a lot more people come out and find out more about downtown West Orange through our trolley rides. I'm sorry, didn't mean to go on a tangent.
You did your homework for this script on the trolley tours.
The other question is on the last few resolutions on the emergencies. Just a little bit of background on that?
Basically, there's four resolutions. There are two different topics. One is for accrued sick time payouts, and the other is for, to finance our tax appeals. These are, became necessary, number one, the accrued sick time payouts. As we've discussed, when we went through the budget process, we did not budget any funds to pay these out over the year. We've accumulated somewhere in the area of $800, $850,000 so far this year, above and beyond what we opened the year with. So this will leave us with approximately, with the million-dollar approval, leave us with about $150,000 to start the year for 2015 to finance whatever expense- to finance whatever expenses we may have going into next year. So that's, that's two of the resolutions, the others for the tax appeals. We have an ordinance for the tax appeal to pay, to finance it, which was introduced at the last meeting. We're going to ask you to table that ordinance tonight, because while we applied to the Local Finance Board in November, we received a call on Thursday, while I was away in Chicago, that the Local Finance Board made the decision the previous Monday that they were not going to hear such applications in December. So therefore, our application will have to be resubmitted next year in, in order to move this transaction from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen, requires the emergency tonight. So, we will be back to you with the ordinance and the application before the Local Finance Board sometime next year, when they deem it appropriate to be heard.
So twenty-four thirty-three dash fourteen dollars today?
What's tabled?
What's tabled?
It'll be tabled, yeah.
Be tabled till January.
Okay.
But do you think January sixth, is it?
Okay. But is it still active because it's a new council year?
That, that'll be a legal determination for bond council to make, and we've had that discussion. He's looking at that. I mean, there's no change in the actual membership of the council, so it's unclear. And frankly, I mean, different, different councils have, that I'm, that I've been involved with have made different calls on that, so we just don't know the answer to that right now.
I'm being sarcastic, but is January sixth too soon for the Local Finance Board to?
Much.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, just for clarification, are there resolutions that are on the agenda that are being pulled or being tabled?
No, the ordinance, the bond ordinance.
The bond ordinance.
The bond ordinance will not be acted upon tonight.
But we are going to act on?
The resolutions.
The resolutions.
You had a question?
I just had a few questions about these same emergency appropriations. So, two thirty dash fourteen is for the million dollars to fund servants' liabilities, accrued sick time. You say you, we've accrued eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars so far. How many employees is that?
You know, I, I saw your email late this afternoon. I wasn't able to look up the individuals. I mean, I can provide that for you.
Okay.
I mean, it's been prime, frankly, it's primarily uniformed employees, some, some non-uniformed, but, you know, so that, it's, I can't really give you a number of how many employees it is. I mean, I could, I can provide that for you, I just couldn't look it up tonight.
No, that's fine. And also, does this, does this million dollars, does it require a new supplemental debt statement?
No, the emergencies don't require supplemental debt statements because they're empowered through the bond law, I mean, budget law, not through the bond law.
Okay. And just one more question. In, in Resolution two thirty-three, it has two different numbers, and they're big numbers. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. At one point, it says that there, that we're making emergency appropriation for three point two eight four million dollars, and then later on, it says two point two eight four million dollars.
Yeah, the, the, the three million dollars in aggregate number, you had the first resolution, the first emergency tonight is for a million, and so the, the second, and if you look in that one, it talks about a million to a million. If you look in this resolution, there's an additional million dollars because it's the second resolution. It accumulates the total emergencies for the year.
Okay. Because the, the resolution itself specifies just tax appeals, and obviously, this isn't a tax appeal, so I'm.
No, but it talks about, but that, that portion of it talks about the total emergencies for the year.
So those two numbers aren't correct?
So they do, yeah. It's a matter of order and aggregate.
Okay. And just to, I wanted to follow up, because we were talking about the Community Development block grants, and Mr. Serra says that, that the administration wanted to change the priority. I just wanted to ask, does that mean we have to amend the, the resolution to reflect that?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to matter. I'm sorry. I don't think it's going to matter either way, but when we submit it, we like to submit it in a way that we're asking for the money, because there's, obviously, we've never gotten over a million dollars from CBDG, but we wanted to make Community House first, only because they've put money into the project already, and now they're ready to go into Phase Two, and they're going to need the money to get Phase Two going. So we wanted to prioritize that.
Right, I'm in total agreement with that. I just wondered if we needed to amend it, or whether we didn't, so I just wanted to flag.
Yeah, I would just like to amend the resolution, to move, to switch one and two, that's all. And then, then we'll do the new resolution.
It'd be a motion to amend the priority list, that's all.
Okay. So we need to pull that?
We do. I'll make a motion, make a motion to amend the priority list on the CBGB applications. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay.
If I could continue. On Agenda Item P, Resolution two twenty-six dash fourteen, it talks about the, the Center for Community Planning, applying for the grant. In the, in the legislation, it talks about that the town will be expected to put up some, I don't want to say minimal, because obviously, all dollars are important. Should, should we put into the legislation a cap on what the expenses could be? I think it talked about maybe a thousand dollars, maybe fifteen hundred dollars.
From what I recall, Councilman, I believe it's fifteen hundred dollars, which is a mandate, it's mandatory, basically, to apply for it. All, all we're approving tonight is information to apply for it. We didn't get this grant yet.
Okay.
All the paperwork we're submitting tonight is, all the paperwork we need to approve tonight is to submit for the grant. We may not get chosen for the grant. There's a lot of other municipalities throughout the state that are applying for this grant. We need to get the paperwork done and submit it to them so that we can apply for the grant, but there is a fifteen hundred dollar minimum. And there's a couple of other things, like if, if we get the grant and they send their team in, we have to agree to allow them to use our copy machines and things like that. But that's basically what it's about.
Would there be another piece of legislation that comes before us if we do win the grant?
Absolutely, because if, my, what I'm thinking is, if we get approved, then we're going to have to come back to you guys and say, we're getting approved, do you want to accept the grant? And then everything will be spelled out specifically.
It'll either be in, it'll either be in the budget or in a chapter one fifty-nine.
And let me just say one last thing, and I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but we are discussing issues with the county to basically split the cost with us for the grant.
Well, that's right, because.
Yeah. So, it's going to be half the price.
And they're actively involved with this association.
Probably, only one entity could submit. The county and the, and the town couldn't submit together.
Okay. And thank you. Council President, could I pull Agenda Item J, Resolution two twenty dash fourteen? Agenda Item M, Resolution two twenty-three dash fourteen? And Resolution, I'm sorry, Agenda Item R, Resolution two twenty-eight dash fourteen, please? And that's all.
Jack, what I thought you were going to say about the Center for Community Planning in this application was a thank you to our acting planner, Paul Greigle, because Paul was the one that brought this to our attention at the planning board meeting, and he intends to submit this application. So, since he's so well-versed, I think we have a good shot.
You are absolutely, you're absolutely correct. Your facts are a little bit off. I actually got the thing myself and then sent it to Paul. Not that it matters, but he did, I spoke with him, and he did submit the paperwork, and he got this thing going for us, and he did a great job, and he's the one who forwarded the rest of the paperwork to me and said we had to get this done, so hopefully, we'll get the grant.
Yeah, right. Any other questions, comments? No, Councilwoman?
My questions have been answered.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, you're good.
Okay, with the exception of Resolutions A, J, M, and R, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Poll in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
So, Mayor, we have resolutions on our, yeah, would you like to, we were waiting for you because of the resolutions on here about their municipal court, so.
Yes, Council President, I appreciate that the council agreed to wait, and I apologize that I was a little.
No need to apologize.
Busy time of year, as we all know. And I appreciate the council's consideration. Among the resolutions for council's consideration tonight are two resolutions submitted by the resolution, for the, by the administration in regards to our municipal court. First resolution submitted by the administration is the recommendation and asking council's consent to appoint Mr. Dennis Dowd as a municipal judge for the Township of West Orange. Dennis, Mr. Dowd, in addition to one time sitting up here as a council member, has been a respected member of this community, not to make him feel old, but for decades.
Megan already did that, don't worry.
From a respected family, well-known to this community. Mr. Dowd is, in addition to being a respected member of the legal profession, he has been active in this township for, for more than a generation in various organizations, various causes, and has been helpful to various families and people in this community. Lived here a long time, made this community his own, respected, as I mentioned, in the legal profession, and it's the administration's position that he would make a fine addition to our municipal court, and, and another respected member in a long line of people who've served that position so admirably over the years for this township. So, I respect the council's consideration and ask for their consideration to appoint Mr. Dowd as a municipal judge. The second recommendation before the council tonight is, I guess technically, a recommendation from the legal department. The municipal prosecutor is appointed by the legal department. The administration did recommend to the legal department that the legal department consider Ms. Bryn Whittle as our prosecutor. As you know, it's always been the administration's intention that these jobs, these positions be filled by West Orange residents. When a previous prosecutor had resigned, we were not able to find a prosecutor locally that the administration, quite honestly, was comfortable with. So, Mr. Candido, well-respected within the municipal court world in Essex County and around the state, admirably filled in. He did a fantastic job. We got nothing but praise and respect for the work he did on behalf of this community, but it was always the administration's intent to find someone who called West Orange home to serve in this position. So, as I've had an opportunity to get to know Ms. Whittle more over the last year, I know her as a hard-working, respected person of this community, very respected in the legal profession. Her background is impeccable, her, her ethics are impeccable, and I believe that she will represent this community with all the class and grace that she has represented herself in all the years that we all know her. So, we made that recommendation to the legal department, and the legal department was inclined to further that recommendation to the council. So, it is those two recommendations that we ask the council for their consideration. Both Ms. Whittle and Mr. Dowd are here tonight, if there's any questions. And of course, the administration and the legal department are here as well, if the council has any questions.
I think I would like them to introduce themselves, if you would, Dennis. Yeah, good. Thank you. Bryn?
I believe I have the pleasure of meeting all of you at various times over the years. As was stated, resident of West Orange, been an attorney for forty years. My latest full-time position was general counsel to the New Jersey Sports and Exposition Authority. I've retired from that position, and I welcome an opportunity to serve the citizens of West Orange again. My father's uncle, Charlie Judge, Charlie Dowd, was elected in nineteen nineteen, and he was there at opening day at the Community House. My father was born on Alden Street. Oh, no, my grandfather was born on Alden Street, my father was born on Ridgeway, so we've been here a while. And on the mother's side, my mother was the first graduating class from St. Cloud Grammar School and the first graduating class from Roseville Junior High School. So it'd be, it's kind of great to be here. I've been a resident of West Orange for far too long, fifty years, but enjoyed every day. I can see my grammar school from here, St. John's up the hill, so it's nice to be here, and it'd be wonderful to be able to serve again.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, Bryn.
Good evening. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to come before you and introduce myself. Some of you know me in other capacities, so now you've kind of seen my professional background a little bit. I want to say thank you to Mayor Parisi for this opportunity and to the legal department to, you know, it's very privileged and just honored to be asked to serve in this capacity. I have grown to enjoy and love residing in this town. I've been here now, going on nine years, and just reflecting on what my parents taught me, as when you move somewhere, you live somewhere, you know, you get involved in that community, you become a part of it, you have a stake in it. And so, you know, I just set forth to do what I was taught and just come out and volunteer and get involved, whether it was events with the PR Commission or Human Relations, then the West Orange African Heritage, serving as president for a term. So, in those capacities, I've gotten to know many of you and the mayor, and just have really grown to love it and to love serving the town. And so now, I'm just honored to have the opportunity to serve in a professional capacity and use that talent and experience that I've had over the sixteen years of practice. So with that, I just say thank you, and I look forward to serving.
Thank you, Bryn, thank you. Thank you for your commitment, and thank you for this impressive resume. Councilman Krikovia?
I just, if I could, Ms. Whittle, if I could just ask you a quick question. You have a very impressive resume, but I couldn't pull out your litigation experience and your practice of municipal law or criminal law. And I just, could you talk a little bit about those areas of your practice and experience?
Okay. My practice has been centered around civil, civil litigation, whether it's family, also social security practice. So no, I have not had extensive municipal and criminal, but I practice and understand the rules and quite capable of, you know, making that transition.
If I could chime in, Councilman, I'm sorry, to answer the Councilman's questions. We recognize that he shouldn't have a ton of experience in municipal court. Quite honestly, a lot of lawyers don't, but we all need that first job at one point or another. But we are planning, with the council's permission, consent, to keep Mr. Candido, who's agreed to stay on for a while, to kind of work side by side with Ms. Whittle, so she could learn not the particulars of the law that she knows, but the particulars of municipal court, which, you know, as you can all appreciate, is very different from other courts. So he's going to stay on for a while to see that she learns some of the particulars. We also have no doubt that the court administration staff, as you guys know, is top-notch, Ms. Daniels and her staff, so we expect them to be a great asset to Ms. Whittle as well.
And I want to add just two things, a quick, Councilman, for you. Ms. Whittle has worked for Community Health Law Project for, I think, the sixteen years of her career, works out of Bloomfield Office. I do make a disclosure that in my pro bono life, I am on that board of trustees, so I've seen her work directly. That is the foremost organization in this state that has eight or ten offices headquartered in South Orange that provides medical services to people with all types of disabilities. So, in that, a lot of it is administrative, but you're advocating, probably, the least fortunate people in our communities, that's number one. Number two, as the business minister points out, there is a disability that goes with this position, meaning in terms of your profession. Ms. Whittle will not be able to practice any criminal law in the county, which does narrow the field, because the people who do lots of criminal law are foreclosed from appearing in any criminal court in Essex County. So again, with all of that, we're confident, I also, as you saw in the contract, I specifically negotiated so she will get less money for the first, I think it's three or four, maybe five months. During that period of time, Mr. Candido, as the mayor said, has been a tremendous resource to this community. He's agreed to make the transition smooth and to work with Ms. Whittle so she can come up to speed, and so we will continue to pay him his stipend, I think, for January, and then we're going to see how much we need him in the, in the months. But again, Ms. Whittle, that's going to be reflected in her stipend through, I think, May, is the negotiation.
The only thing I would like to add is that when I started as an assistant county prosecutor for this county, I had no experience as a lawyer. I came right out of law school, so you get experience on those jobs, and she'll get a lot of experience, and Ms. Whittle will be a lot of experience in this one.
And actually, in my experience at the Community Health Law Project, which I've been there fifteen years, you know, I came in as a brand-new attorney, and I was thrown into about seven areas of law, and have served my clients well, you know, and actually, a lot of people are very disappointed to see me go. So, so I look forward to a challenge. Really, it's the basics and the foundation of the law, and as long as you have that, you know, and I have a wealth of support in the legal community as well. People have reached out and are also willing to support in any way that they can.
I do want to make one other point. As everyone in this council knows, the mayor of, our last real permanent prosecutor was Mark Infante, who we all know was an incredible asset to this community, and Diu was terrific, and we all remember him, and we're confident that Ms. Whittle will follow, as the mayor said, with that degree of integrity that this community demands.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. I just want to add, to Ms. Whittle's back, the fact is that I've seen the work she's done and her commitment as a member and leader of the West Orange Rent Leveling Board. So, to see the work she's done there on that level and her concern for the residents of West Orange, particularly the renters of West Orange, I have tremendous confidence that you'll bring tremendous respect to the office that you will now go into. So, good luck.
Thank you.
If I could just follow very quickly. You answered all of my questions, and I feel much better about this, knowing that Mr. Candido is going to be there. We have an extremely busy municipal court between Judge Starrett, who's moving on, who's done an outstanding job, and Mr. Candido. We're losing roughly, I don't know, 40 years of experience directly with courts. So, I did have some concern about that, but it makes me feel much better that you're keeping on Mr. Candido, because I think he will be a really good asset for Ms. Whittle, getting her up to speed, because it's a really busy court. And just want to make sure that there's not a negative impact by bringing in two, obviously capable people, but still are going to have a learning curve. So, thank you.
Yeah. I, Council President, I just recommend that while we're on topic, possibly make a motion to approve Resolution 220-14.
For Mr. Dowd?
No, for Bryn Whittle, because that was pulled, that was approved.
Right. Madam Clerk?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Councilman. Okay, so, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Welcome. Thank you. Take a picture. You didn't take a picture.
Take a picture? I'll take a picture.
Yeah, I think you can.
Take a picture.
Bryn and Dennis, can we take a photo for?
Together?
Sure. Take a picture, sure. Yeah, that's what we do.
Not a bunch of pictures. Judge?
Thank you, welcome, and good night, and happy holidays to you. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, you might as well, we have Resolution M.
Well, we, Resolution A, you have first, 211-14, that was pulled by Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on the other page. This is a resolution for the agreement with Swift Reach Networks to provide the emergency communications. This is a new agreement. John, just curious about the length of the contract, are we going to, because we had a previous contract, are we doing one-year agreements?
Yes. We entered into an agreement last year with a, with a agreement to extend during that process, and as we always try to do, we continue to try to find the best vendor possible for our services, and not just, just because we selected one in the last 12 months to necessarily renew that, and we did that, and we've actually found another company that we believe is, provides us a better service at a better cost. And so, we bring that for your, for your review and acceptance this evening.
So, this again will be for one year, and again, if you're pleased with that, then we can extend it. Okay. Any questions on Resolution A? Councilman?
I just wanted to be clear, this is for both emergency and non-emergencies, correct?
Yes.
And, and it seems to be basically unlimited? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I say congratulations, because we've just cut our, if we approve this, we'll cut our costs almost in half, and so, I'm very pleased to see this. And it looks like we've even got a more capable system, too.
It's an ever-changing field, the technol, these technologies are moving quickly, and, you know, we've been able to, to take advantage of that. And frankly, our staff is, is developing, I think, a sense of, of the market and a sense of the new technologies, and that, that helps us stay ahead of it. So, you know, I think, I appreciate the work going on in the police department, as well as really town-wide with our staff, and coming alive into the IT ages. So, I think hopefully, moving forward, we'll see more of this.
It helps to know the right questions to ask, too, John, so really, you get credit for that, because I know that you spearhead a lot of this, and, you know, we've been, township has been with an archaic system for a very long time, and you are moving them ahead in this technology.
Thank you.
So, thank you, and saving money. So, I make a motion to approve Resolution 211-14, the agreement with Swift Reach Networks.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. And the next resolution was Resolution M?
M 223-14 was pulled by Councilman Krikoviac.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, there he is.
This is a resolution for the bleachers at the high school baseball field on the third base side, and I just had a couple of quick questions, perhaps if you wanted to give any additional background, Mr. LaFleur, I just had a couple of questions on the memo that you, that you sent around, so.
Well, what, what the administration is requesting tonight is the actual purchase, the authorization to purchase the bleachers. The bleachers are being purchased through a cooperative contract through, I believe it's the Middlesex County Educational Cooperative. The cost of the bleachers is just over the bid threshold amount by about $4,500. It requires the council approval. These bleachers are going to be an eight-row bleacher. It's going to be elevated, which means the, you actually have a platform or a landing in front of the first row, that's about 30 inches above grade. So, one of the things we are trying to accomplish here is improve better visibility of the infield and home plate area from the, from the home side of the West Orange High School baseball field. And since the bleachers are also elevated, there is an ADA compliant ramp that has to be provided for them.
So, as a result of that, we, it looks like we're now looking, the original cost was estimated at $60,000, we're now at least roughly 10% over that, it looks like it's about $65,000, $66,000 now?
I think it's, it's, with, with the site work, it's a little bit, bit higher than that, it's, it's close to $76,000.
It's, I'm sorry, $76,000?
That, that's correct.
I, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about this. The stands, the description you gave me shows that, that the, that the number of people that can stay on these stands is 91?
That's, that's the seating capacity of, of the bleachers.
I've been over there many times, because my son plays baseball, I haven't seen anywhere close to 90 people even attending the games, as opposed to sitting in the, in the home bleachers. Was that a requirement to have that much?
I believe this was the minimum-size bleacher for this, for this height. It's approximately 21 feet by, by 21 feet.
Okay, okay. And I also wanted to ask, it says the eighth row of the bleachers is eight-and-a-half feet above grade.
That's correct.
That doesn't sound like a lot. I, I know that the current bleachers there, one set, I can actually rest my, my arms on the top seating bench, and I, you can't do that on the other one, because it's covered by, it's blocked by a fence. But eight-and-a-half feet doesn't seem that much of an increase from what it is now. Do you have any sort of feel for what's the increase there? Because?
Right now, even, there were two sets of bleachers that are there now. One was a four-row bleacher, the other is a five-row bleacher. The second row of the proposed bleacher, the eight-row bleacher that's elevated, will be higher than the back row of the five-row bleacher now. So, just, even if you're in the second row, you're higher than any row of seating that we currently have at the high school. So, it, it's a, it's a noticeable, and given the proximity of the bleachers to the field, it's a significant increase in the, in the height.
What, what is the percentage increase, just roughly? Because, again, eight-and-a-half feet just doesn't sound that.
It's, it's double.
It's double, okay. And are you confident that that's going to significantly improve the, the view?
It'll, it'll significantly improve it. Still not ideal, because the, the field is so tight. It's an excellent field to play on. It's unfortunate, though, that they use practically every square foot of area to build the field without a lot of, I don't think enough consideration given to the, given to the spectators.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Resolution M? Okay, I make a motion to approve 223-14.
Second. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Resolution 228-14 was pulled by Councilman Krikoviac.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, there he is.
This is a resolution for the bleachers at the high school baseball field on the third base side, and I just had a couple of quick questions, perhaps if you wanted to give any additional background, Mr. LaFleur, I just had a couple of questions on the memo that you, that you sent around, so.
Well, what, what the administration is requesting tonight is the actual purchase, the authorization to purchase the bleachers. The bleachers are being purchased through a cooperative contract through, I believe it's the Middlesex County Educational Cooperative. The cost of the bleachers is just over the bid threshold amount by about $4,500. It requires the council approval. These bleachers are going to be an, an eight-row bleacher. It's going to be elevated, which means the, you actually have a platform or a landing in front of the first row, that's about 30 inches above grade. So, one of the things we are trying to accomplish here is improve better visibility of the infield and home plate area from the, from the home side of the West Orange High School baseball field. And since the bleachers are also elevated, there is an ADA compliant ramp that has to be provided for them.
So, as a result of that, we, it looks like we're now looking, the original cost was estimated at $60,000, we're now at least roughly 10% over that, it looks like it's about $65,000, $66,000 now?
I think it's, it's, with, with the site work, it's a little bit, bit higher than that, it's, it's close to $76,000.
It's, I'm sorry, $76,000?
That, that's correct.
I, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about this. The stands, the description you gave me shows that, that the, that the number of people that can stay on these stands is 91?
That's, that's the seating capacity of, of the bleachers.
I've been over there many times, because my son plays baseball, I haven't seen anywhere close to 90 people even attending the games, as opposed to sitting in the, in the home bleachers. Was that a requirement to have that much?
I believe this was the minimum-size bleacher for this, for this height. It's approximately 21 feet by, by 21 feet.
Okay, okay. And I also wanted to ask, it says the eighth row of the bleachers is eight-and-a-half feet above grade.
That's correct.
That doesn't sound like a lot. I, I know that the current bleachers there, one set, I can actually rest my, my arms on the top seating bench, and I, you can't do that on the other one, because it's covered by, it's, it's blocked by a fence. But eight-and-a-half feet doesn't seem that much of an increase from what it is now. Can, do you have any sort of feel for what's the increase there? Because?
Right now, even, there were two sets of bleachers that are there now. One was a four-row bleacher, the other is a five-row bleacher. The second row of the proposed bleacher, the eight-row bleacher that's elevated, will be higher than the back row of the five-row bleacher now. So, just, even if you're in the second row, you're higher than any row of seating that we currently have at the high school. So, it, it's a, it's a noticeable, and, and given the proximity of the bleachers to the field, it's a significant increase in the, in the height.
What, what is the percentage increase, just roughly? Because, again, eight-and-a-half feet just doesn't sound that.
It's, it's double.
It's double, okay. And are you confident that that's going to significantly improve the, the view?
It'll, it'll significantly improve it. Still not ideal, because the, the field is so tight. It's an excellent field to play on. It's unfortunate, though, that they use practically every square foot of area to build the field without a lot of, I don't think enough consideration given to the, given to the spectators.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Resolution M? Okay, I make a motion to approve 223-14.
Second. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Resolution 228-14 was pulled by Councilman Krikoviac.
Yes, thank you. This is a couple of change orders amounting, I think, to a little under $5,000 for the project there. The original contract was $352,000. I, I really just pulled this because if I understood your email correctly, you have already spent this money. So?
One was a, a field change, because one of these change orders is to put a footing underneath a, a new exterior wall. If you recall, the Fred's Exxon had two bays and two bay doors. One of the bays is going to remain for vehicle storage for motorcycles and vehicle speed trailers. The other bay is being converted into office area, needed a wall. What we thought was a sufficient footing underneath the slab for that wall, once we did some demolition around, it turned out to be not sufficient. So, to build that wall, we had to make a, a field adjustment and build a deeper footing and a foundation wall to accommodate the wall above grade.
Can your memo explain that?
Right, and then the other was a garage door opener. Just realized it was going to be too heavy, too much of a lift, and a bit of an inconvenience to have to go into the building to, to open the garage door all the time.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I pulled this because, as, as you know, I have a pet peeve with us spending money and then coming to us, for the, for the township spending money, then coming to us to approve the change orders after the fact, when we can't really do anything about it. So, I just wanted to pull it, since I could express my disapproval of that practice. Thank you, I, I didn't have any more of the questions.
Okay, make a motion to?
I'm sorry, but is there, was there an explanation as to why we had to move forward without the change order approval, because we haven't had a meeting?
Well, certainly for, for the wall, it, it was something that was going to have to be made while we were there. And, and to avoid just always putting a change order before you for every little field modification, just took these two to, to put them both together.
Sure, I mean, it's, I know it's small items, but we just have to keep an eye on that.
We do.
You know, it's, it's process and, our best practice. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. Just the difference is $4,785. Right, that was the difference in the combined amount. Make a motion to approve Resolution 22, 228-14.
Motion. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. I just wanted to say that we have Resolution 229-14, which is our special improvement district on introduction. We'll expect the fanfare at the next meeting, yes? A presentation, will there be a presentation in January, the downtown, January 6th? Great. Good, okay.
The adoption is ready, I don't worry. Yeah.
Wait, wait, I want to know what you said.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that the special improvement district budget is being introduced this evening.
You have an first reading now.
We do. It's, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution, it's not a first reading.
No, it's a resolution, it's being introduced tonight. It was passed on introduction, and the public hearing, what I was saying, you have to have at least 28 days in between.
Right. So?
This is similar to the municipal budget process, where you have a resolution introducing the budget, and then a waiting period, then a hearing, and then adoption. So, it's, it's, it isn't an ordinance, it is, it is a resolution.
And the hearing and adoption will be the same night.
There's really, it really should, probably shouldn't be any discussion this evening about it. There is, the discussion really is intended to, to occur during the hearing itself.
Which will be the second?
Would be the second meeting in January.
Right, which is on the 6th.
No, that's the first meeting in January.
That'd be the first.
So, you don't have the budget in front of you now?
No, they have, they have everything.
It's introduced tonight, it's, but it.
I'm saying the public hearing is going.
The 6th is too close, when it was the 13th, there, there was enough time.
Correct, so you have, it has to be the end of January, the 27th.
Okay, all right. What I thought was important about that is the comparison notes, what, what we spent this past year and what we're projecting next year.
Right. Okay.
Motion to table ordinance, I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2433-14.
And is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
And again, this will be rescheduled in accordance with the local finance board.
Right.
We have an ordinance on first reading, ordinance 2434-14. This is an ordinance amending Chapter seven in traffic, providing handicap parking at Twenty Valley Way and also at Seven Kirk, sorry, Kirk Street. And make a motion to introduce on first reading.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Is there anyone here that would, wants to comment on Valley Way or Kirk Street?
No comment on first reading.
Just in case they're here and didn't, don't know that.
They are not here.
Okay. Seeing none. Or, yes, motion to...
That's it.
Okay.
Next.
Resolution 2435-14, ordinance amending Chapter second, uh, Chapter two. Sorry, this is an ordinance entitled Municipal Court Established. Have a motion, I'll make a motion to introduce on first reading.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
I need a motion to go into ABC.
Any other comments or questions before we adjourn? Okay, we're going to adjourn as the council and come back as the ABC Board.
I need a motion to do so.
Make a motion to adjourn as the council and reconvene as the ABC Board.
Is there a second?
We come back.
Okay, I'm, they're talking.
Yes.
Okay.
In the case you leave, before we come back and reconvene as the council, we would like to wish everyone a very happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and a happy and safe and healthy New Year.
Absolutely.
Councilman Cirillo?
Fresh faces in the crowd. You want to explain what we're doing, closing the meeting, and we're just explaining your question.
No, no.
They know.
I think so.
It's, there is not, it's a discussion, they're going to, yeah.
So we are adjourning as the council, and we have two hearings here for the alcohol and beverage commission.
No, just one, just a discussion.
One, okay. Oh, I don't... Okay, our meeting is adjourned, and we wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, a very Merry Christmas, and a happy, healthy, and safe New Year.